Okay, it is 6:30. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Corporal Munoz, will you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Corporal. First up, we have some recognitions and presentations. Chief Siemens.
Evening Council, Mayor, Staff, Citizens. Yes, we do. Ms. Laverne, thank you. First off, I'd like to take a moment and mention a recent hurdle that we overcame in our telecommunications center. Shannon Parker is our chief dispatcher and she's doing a heck of a job in there. That is one of the most difficult jobs you will, not just that job, but telecommunications in general. Extremely difficult, extremely demanding. I don't know how they do it. I'm glad that they do do it. They're often the unsung heroes and we're very grateful for what they do here and certainly try to recognize them when we can. They're not an afterthought at our agency like they are at some others. That said, we recently passed another, I say another like we do it all the time, they're not that often, but our DPS audits are our telecommunications center. It's a very sensitive center. It's the primary reason we don't have open access to the police department beyond the evidentiary stuff and hospital arrests. It's because there's CGS-sensitive data that gets transferred back and forth there. And that's the criminal justice information system. I got that right. I was winging it though, some of these acronyms. But it's very sensitive, it's very important, the state's very concerned with its care, as they should be. And part of that is a very intense, demanding audit that we do, kind of randomly actually. Is that correct, Ms. Shannon? Okay, so we had a random FBI CGS audit a couple of years ago and that's not what this one was though. And we were successful there as well. This year, we had our third-year CGS audit and we were very successful on that and obviously in large part to Shannon Parker's leadership in that area. And we wanted to take a moment, mention that to y'all, that your dispatch center is second to none. It operates at all standards levied and then some, and it's in great hands with Shannon Parker and Captain Zune go overseeing that. Just want to take a moment, recognize her and her staff. Thank you Shannon, we appreciate what you're doing. Secondly, I would like to take a moment and introduce our newest officer. Well, I say that, we've got one in the books or fixing to be on the books, you can hear, that'll start here in a few weeks, but he's technically not on the city payroll yet. So, our most recent officer and recent hire, and man, I'm telling you, the effort we put, the premium we place on applicant processing and who we hire here is obviously evident in the caliber of folks that we bring onboard. And that goes back long before myself being here. Chief Davis placed the same premium on it, but I certainly haven't tapped the brakes there nor has anybody here in our agency. Whether it's Garrett Earlywine, who's here tonight as well, we're always getting the top performers from ACOG and that's no easy task. That said, we swung and hit another home run with Brent McClellan. He joins us from McKinney, Texas. That's where home is for him. He's retired and former Marine. Did I say those correctly? Retired Marine. Okay. Retired Marine, and we thank him for his service there, 20 years in that, and happy birthday by the way. Today is the Marine Corps birthday. He has three beautiful children and been married 19 years. That's a miracle in and of itself in this type of work and certainly in the job that he was doing before. And God bless her and your family, sir. And he's also a recent graduate of Texas, or I say a recent, he's a Texas A&amp;M Aggie graduate. Whoop. And so, you know, that's the second one that we brought, technically the third, myself included, but Tarleton stayed on the A&amp;M umbrella. We had Matt Lemon, if you'll recall. And we're glad to have him. It's another good hire. It's indicative in the output, the product that he's produced for us. And we want to take a moment and recognize him being brought onboard.
Chief.
Thank you, sir. Glad to have you.
Chief.
Sir.
If I may, I just told Officer McLennan in the parking lot that I had somebody reach out that they had been pulled over by a Castle Hills police officer. And they said it was Officer McLennan and he was the nicest officer. They've never had somebody so nice to them when they were getting a ticket.
Man, and that's something, because we got Ron Singleton here and he gets a lot of love. So, we hear that about all of our officers, but that's fantastic. You know, when we, placing a premium on who we hire here, that's certainly part of it. I couldn't tell you exactly what metrics are being used, but we know it when we see it. And, you know, and we certainly have safeguards in place for ensuring, you know, what we think we're seeing. But he's lived up to the bill. He's already been submitted for our Lick of the Month Award, which is a good proactive arrest or some other event that the officer initiates. And we're glad to have him. Thank you, sir, and thanks for coming, staying late. And lastly, and I'm gonna try and do this without tearing up guys, it's been a while Corporal, but no promises. You know, we've got Garrett Earlywine and Corporal Romeo Munoz here tonight. Both those officers, June 9th, 2019, were forced over the, the overpass there at Honeysuckle when a intoxicated driver crashed through an accident scene, DWI accident scene. They were working at the time, killing a good Samaritan. And again, forcing our officers and a couple others over that, over that overpass. And it's a call nobody should ever have to get, it's the worst call I've had as a police chief and really as any member of a police department. Officers down and unknown how they are. We were fortunate to get Garrett Earlywine back pretty early. And I say pretty early, that's relative speaking. He was out a couple of months and he'll always be hindered up a little bit in his shoulder, but he got back on the street relatively quick, again, considering the magnitude and gravity of the situation. But Corporal Munoz was injured a little more severely. And he was out almost a year and a half, I guess a year and a quarter, sir, just about. And joined us back up about five weeks ago, he was cleared, finished an abbreviated FTO and he's back on dog watch. And we wanted to take a moment and, God bless these guys, and the divine intervention that was out there that night, but the hurdles that they've overcome and how they've responded and reacted to adversity that they faced since then. And I know it's a nightmare that they're gonna live the rest of their lives, but it's a testament to their character and we're glad to have them back. Yeah, hop over there Mayor, get a picture real quick. I'm sorry to interrupt, can you get one with our new officers as well, please? That'll be the end for now. You know, we need to take advantage of these opportunities in recognizing folks from time to time. It's warranted, they deserve it. It goes a long way in fostering morale and we've been through a lot. Thank you Mayor.
Chief, thank you so much, and I'll echo your sentiments. That's never a call that anybody wants to receive, but I'm impressed at how well the department came together to take care of Corporal Munoz, from cutting his grass to making sure that everything that he needed was taken care of. And we're glad to have you back.
You came out along those, well, thank you Mayor.
I was there. Okay, citizen comments. Ms. Jaffet, did you have any comments to make for the citizens to be heard?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Do we have Mr. Joyce?
One tiny typo, thank you Mayor. Page seven of eight, minutes of September 8th, down near the bottom, it says Joyce noted first meeting at Castle Hills Business Association. It's actually 7:30 a.m., believe it or not. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory.
Two things, on that same page, at the bottom, the vote was four to nothing, but it wasn't at five to nothing?
I'm sorry, Mr. Rappley, would you mind turning up the audio a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing council members.
Also, to our city secretary, in the future, it would be, in the past, and I think it would be good to continue in the future, we list all the citizens present at a meeting when they sign in.
We don't do a sign-in sheet anymore. Should I be doing one?
Well, we've done it for decades, I don't know when we stopped, but...
Okay, I didn't know that, but we'll do it next time.
Thank you Ms. Craig. Mr. Gregory, what was your initial comment?
On page seven of eight, on the minutes of September the 8th, the last vote meeting to adjourn passed four to nothing, weren't there five of us here?
I believe so, sir.
So, it'd be five to nothing.
Okay. Do we have any other changes or amendments? Okay, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Joyce, thank you so much. I don't imagine we have any further discussion, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you Council. Okay, we're gonna move forward a little bit to our executive session items so that we can let Mr. Sheehardt get on with his evening. And we'll start off with item number four, discussion on lawsuit-styled Kenjo Outdoor Advertising LLC versus City of Castle Hills, Texas. Civil action number 520-CV-01143-JKP and possible action, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorneys. Mr. Schnell, do we have to come back in from that executive session and then go back out?
Mayor, you can open up both executive sessions right now. And then when you return, you'll have to, when you reopen the meeting, you'll need to specify that no action was taken in either one of those sessions, and then allow for possible action on item four, then possible action on item five. If you read item five and open up item five and announce the executive session, please state the time and the date that we're moving out of open session, and then we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Okay, item number five, discussion on status of lawsuit-styled Sylvia Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills, Edward J. Archivini II, John Siemens, and Alexander Wright, civil action number 520-CV-1151, and possible action, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorneys. We will now be proceeding to executive session. It is November 10th at 6:44 p.m.
Maybe it's 290.
So maybe it's two hundred ninety one. Are you, so, yeah. But I was in a problem, I can tell, that's, five, two, eight. Like, that box, my, which you need, you can find it, and it's all from the whole, it's turning.
(coughs).
You hear about that?
Yeah.
No.
Um, that's why I was like, you know, you said about it.
No.
I will eat two dollars. We know that we need to provide access. Really, absolutely. We just, um, you know, we always just get access. Europe, seventy five. Set on completely. Well, it is more of a teacher. You know, the, 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 the salad.
Yeah.
You have this part of, you have it all, you have it all.
No.
Eight weeks. This is, uh, 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 uh. I don't think this, I don't, I don't.
No.
We had it so far, even though it was sold. I knew it. That in public, five hundred. There's something so embarrassing, like, you know, like, four, five hundred, but the same size house. And all this pop is, you know, it's, yeah, I just didn't understand that part. As all that work? Every city on the block, a red new, since they're buying, they're aging. It, 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 it's three down the street. All the new project. It really, it's kind of a crazy. Several moves from, you started, you, also you see, like, being. What I'm in the darkest. Hundred and twenty-five, hundred pounds, three thousand, thirty, um, right.
Going to move the date back to his words. Or would we?
So, I mean, as you think. That's other things that you have to absorb. It really worked. I was telling you it didn't work. I'll say on the voice.
Yeah.
Yep. Now, I'll.
No.
I always thought. Okay, you know, you just remember we decided not to. You have any need?
Yes, well. We need to convert.
I saw this thing over there.
Yeah, they're basic.
Yeah.
Those knives.
And those nine dogs.
Yeah. Pick this. It's made out of that. Literally submerged underwater. Swallow. And. It's twenty minutes. But you. Ten mil.
That's that's that's. Like a stomach only.
Yeah. And then it's a podium for. Look down and actually.
And leave that for another way.
It should be done.
That Friday. That's how big that is. Well, we put that big door at forty six and nine, forty six inch. That one's a little bit long.
No.
That's thirty on the side. Yeah. I'll send the scrap. We need to change that door. Where the police always take place. They're going down the hall. Back off when we walk.
Yeah.
Please remind me. And then the other way.
Yeah.
And then that big old wall. But that's why they don't have. Some video of what we got that one. And that big. Harder. I'll rather mention forty six inch on that.
Starting with the. Yes, not. Oh, one is south west. That they have all those down. They all have forty two inch. Do you want to replace it? Where's the point?
And we thought I'd say. Yeah. And I know it's the end. A lot of the old ones that were in these doors will need. Part of the again appliances have to break up. Take off. Take off the doors and bring it in and put the door back on. Take longer. Our house security. They got it. And then the doors. All the doors up here. Got it in. Everything back together and try to make them spot on. Both the island and the center. And the pantry floor here. We didn't do it in the twigs. We had to take everything apart again. It's like. And then put all that together. And I had I had a little. Not into something. I just felt that. Sounds like a ball. I should have known. Put it in and did it together. They like. That furniture ran into the nightmare. Is it do a. A lot of my. You might like to do. Solid five. But then they would have, yes. You just. You have those. Condos in the. In the.
Yeah.
Have those staircases. They were like. Not just middle of the pitch. Open up seeking on that.
Yeah.
But we had a good. About a good. And maybe all their fat down. We look outside. It's not good. But yeah, I know the staircase. That really. Like a lot of the. Made by the house. And here. Because. You didn't. Because they had. Let me just go. And then all the. All those. Also.
Yep.
Have a pool set up there. That one's in full size. Very. We need the beach. Scare away. We have to. Clean them. A lot of shit. Back in the house. We go upstairs. It's like a bit of spirit. My brother happened. Happened to that on the way there. That is the staircase down. And we were standing with the staircase. It's not. Someone told him he got taken out. Try to take. Have to do it. While I do. No matter. I'm sorry. So it's. So it was so steep. My brother was there. I'm telling him. You can't. The one run down. And how long? It's only. I feel like if you say. I don't know. Same. Because. The normal. The noise is going.
She's ahead.
No, she was so. I'll check. She says three.
Yep.
We just had three. What? We just had three. Yeah. This thing is. Actually, that's a chance to turn. I said. Hour. Is it? She won't be a day that you go along. Yeah, I have. Well, it's beginning. Tomorrow. Yeah. Says there. Everybody payroll one time.
Yeah.
We will run some. Little just like. Opened in. They flew up. Dallas. Dallas. Some. Like. Right. Then we got. Portland was from. There we go. I heard that. I heard that. Very colorful. I remember. First day. At the first day. I showed up. That. Some. Not afraid. Yet. Again. You've seen. But. In part. Heavier. I was wearing that. Long sick. All over. Sighing like. It's gotta be great. Seven years. How. They're all laughing. There is something.
Yeah.
I'm not as well as.
Yeah.
Yeah. I learned it. I need to be like. There is. Like three. Then you're building. I have a land. But like you said. You know. Watch yourself. If you. You do a lot. You know. Work on five. Before the. Say. Let's give him his name. Good luck. Yeah. You lost. I don't know if you remember those. Compliments. That was with. Yeah.
Uh huh.
Very. Very. So there's. For putting. To all. Which we love. Yeah, we. Yeah. And. Again, a pressure. Those dogs. The dog. Now, now it's. Now. That's the right. I was. We know. We don't want like those. That is very bad. But it's on the end. Oh, but. Did it take a must. People? I don't think. So. Don't look at. Hey, Dan.
Yeah.
Now, they're all. Dogs look really. Lots of care. Wait, wait. I'm. Other company. This time. Only care. I like them. I think that's waiting for you. That was definitely better. Definitely better. And it was anything that had to set up that. That camera. And that. Video. So it's. Portion. That's why we did. But it's. Fair. It's a forty.
Yeah.
It was. Set it up.
Ah.
I do. Fogging down.
Yeah.
That those looks are out there. When they're putting on. It's a foggy area. Down at four o'clock. And then it's. First. Wow. And that's.
Mm hmm.
Then you go in there. Computers. Turn it all up. Just.
Right.
How does that unit work? Pretty good. It was. They think they're going to the last. Maybe three years. That hasn't been that long.
No.
That sprayer.
Oh, that fogger.
It turned. I hope. How much does it do? We have to recharge. First use on that. Recharge. Hundred months of battery.
The back. Yeah, the back.
The fluid.
The.
Water. Feel it. Okay, so. I can. I have a gallon. I believe a half gallon inside there. And I. Probably. I'm gonna say twenty point five minutes. That happens now. You know that. That gallon.
Right.
And that is. Another one. My. It just depends. How long you have a trigger that.
Yeah.
And also.
Right.
Now. I have a whole. Just shoots a prop.
Yeah.
It seems like. Probably. On both. You. You. Okay. I got a can. Before it started. It's off. The. I just. This is that. I guess nine forty nine.
I saw.
I feel like you already did the fogging.
Yeah.
Six thousand dollars. See what I saw. That. Except. Didn't. I like that commercial.
Yeah. The large. Big are. They're probably. Those.
We need a car. We have. That's. I can. That's pretty good. Yeah. Every time. Candidate. We're. Would they pay? All. Fogging.
Okay.
Or somebody else. In. It worked. It lasted a long time. They could only hold. Eight ounces.
Oh, okay.
So we work. And we all. We have. I don't. Now, can you? How? How many people use their stolen box? The other day when I had that. This local lease rate. And a two thousand one dollar.
Yeah.
Almost. That makes sense. Get. That company. Come out. But then again. He doesn't. The company. Really get paid. With that. Service. It's. You know. Anyway. So. What was it saying? Oh, yeah. So. They got. They got a jail cell. All of those. People. Spray. And all that. That's. We thought. But that's what I got. That guy. I need to make sure. Do the jail cell. Who are the prisoners coming? And they come in like. I mean, they're very. Cool, you know. But to make sure we break. Then to call those. That's a lot of looking at video. I'll do. Make sure. So. Scrap. You. They have a study. I think he's. Daddy. You know. That. That's.
Yes.
I said. Move every dollar. Yes. It is. So. We. Did everything.
Yep.
Mm hmm. I should. Move everything. And then we. Get all these cans. I would be getting them. Three hundred and fifty. Spray. Move up. But you know. The fogger just.
Yeah.
Those are the door. For like five, ten minutes. And it's. That's it. So. All of the time. They had it. There we rag. Spray. There you. Why? Maybe it gets. This. If this one. If he's off. Or, you know. If that worries with it. You know. Twenty seven. I believe he's pulled out. Back with here tonight. Said all night. Holy crap. Here. Hopefully. That's it. Now, we never did. Dispatch. No, I have. But I bought them. Out of the.
Yeah.
I got. I'll. Yeah. Spray. It's just small. I'll. Yeah. Small. Really quick. Scare himself. The citizens down. He's. And he has. He wants to go on. I have. You. You have. What? Okay. Well, they carry it walking. But they can't do that long.
No.
After they go the rest. They're. Consider they. The. I don't know. Fifteen forty minutes. I have for that. The. As long as you spray it.
Yep.
As long as it sits. It's sort of. The rest is there. As long as we can. Pretend to be a friend. You have to smell it. Or you can't let. For.
Right.
You need to tend to be. All the way around. The back. Inside. Do not.
Right.
That's all I. Know. Did we? We're that.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Remember that. I don't think that's a. Bad. I gotta go. I gotta shoot that off. The. Just that area. Was all that dirt. Oh, still. Make it that.
Yeah.
Yes. And I know I'm gonna spend at least eight. Eight thousand dollars. On that stuff. Thousand dollars. That's what you should have. First. Yeah, I would spend. Three thousand dollars on that. Order.
Yeah.
Yeah, I found. I asked. In the. Report. It shows. Yellow. Supply. Oh, yeah. But.
Oh, it's not. Being in that. There. This is that. You know. Beautiful. Right. I was.
Yeah.
I thought.
Yeah.
We'll do it again. Remember this one. I'm playing rich.
Oh, I don't even know. Long time. Really.
I remember. Park down.
Yeah.
How you doing?
SOS.
You gonna be with the family in prison?
Um, Thanksgiving. Coming.
Where's all your food?
Oh, I know it.
You're not gonna be good.
I know. Uh, no, Thanksgiving. Uh. Logan Amber. That's what. He and Amber bought. A condo. Yeah, I sold my stuff. I had red house. But they found. Okay.
Yeah, I mean. And I have a. We're from. Well. My greatest concern. About. Starting above. But I buy. I also. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Kill. Mark. Mark. That'd be just. Mark.
Yeah.
But I mean.
Huh?
But if you. A mark. Or CBS. Or CBS. CBS. Has. Live or something. So you can. Need.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, you said. No, we're from. South Bay City.
Salt Lake. Well. There was that Mormon. So.
For Thanksgiving.
You ever been there before?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
How much? Very brown. Never. Mormons. Not just. No. They bring us. I'm worried. It's too many.
Yeah, I was saying. We. So. That's.
A.
Oh, the.
A baseball, a baseball.
Man, rock, you got that.
Do you like Vegas?
Yeah, and personally, I find it.
Good for you, Joe. I don't think I'll be around in twenty five years, but if I am, I'm gonna take a picture of you doing it.
Who said that?
That guy, I think, Kate. Oh, I don't know, okay. Okay.
Okay, we are making our way back from executive session. It is seven fifty-nine, November tenth, twenty twenty, and we are back from the executive session with no action taken for items number four and number five. We will be proceeding on to item number one. Discussion and possible action on the extension of the sixth declaration of a local state of disaster and public health emergency executed by Mayor J.R. Trevino on July sixteenth, twenty twenty. This is the sixth time that we've been here, and basically, we are recapping that we are in a state of public health emergency, and this will allow us to potentially recapture funds if that is a possibility for us to do so again.
Mayor, if I, if I may say, um, excuse me, just so it's clear, the reason we have to bring this back is because under the Texas Government Code section, which allows the mayor to declare a local state of emergency, that authority has a thirty day lifespan. So, the council needs to act to renew the mayor's declaration roughly within thirty days of when it would otherwise expire. We're not limited, the governing body is not limited to a thirty day extension, but because of the unpredictability of the pandemic and the community's overall circumstance, for the last several months, the recommendation from staff has been to simply renew the mayor's latest declaration for, until the next regular meeting of the governing body. One of the reasons for that, especially when it was early on, was that our declaration, Mayor Trevino's declaration, is limited by what Governor Abbott will allow local officials to do. So, at this point, the local declaration that Mayor Trevino signed, I believe in July, is still very much in line with Governor Abbott's GA twenty-nine, GA thirty, GA thirty-one, and GA thirty-two executive orders. It, it would be my recommendation that the council extend the local declaration at least until the regular meeting in December, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, council ought to move approval of the extension of the sixth declaration of a local state of disaster and public health emergency executed by Mayor J.R. Trevino until our regularly scheduled December city council meeting.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, and thank you, Mr. May, for the second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Item number two, discussion of possible action on change orders related to Banyan and Glen Tower Drainage Project Phase One, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I brought this forward just to essentially close out our Banyan Drainage Project there at Glen Tower. Part of the reason I want to bring it forward is because we had a number of change orders or, you know, processes that we changed during the, the project over that period that were either at the request of, say, CPS who was working there and/or discussions with the contractor, the engineer, and myself of things that came up during the project that needed to be done. Enclosed or attached is the list of all of these change orders. You'll see where they were expenditures and credit. We did receive credit, so it kind of essentially balanced out a portion of what would have been a little bit higher on some of the changes that were done during the project. But at a three-point-two million dollar project, it only totaled about thirty-eight thousand, which is one-point-two percent of the total project. Some of these change orders were at the recommendation, again, at, at both the contractor and our engineer, and Jason Granados here from RPS, who can explain if you have particular questions about each change order. Moving forward, I wanted to make sure council was aware of these projects, I mean, excuse me, aware of these change orders approved, and we can close out this project because everything has been inspected and cleared, and I'd like to close it out and give them the retainage moving forward as well. With our future projects, what I'd like to also put in place when we approve a contract with change orders, if something's higher than fifty thousand, I have to bring it in front of you as council. And if it's below, then you give me the authority to make these adjustments during the project. Regardless of the fact that wasn't done in the last contract with this one, and so that's why I wanted to bring it in front of you and have it closed out and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. I'd just like to appreciate the fact that we are looking at about one percent overage on the original contract. I think that's testament to your management of this project, and on behalf of the city, I thank you so much for being mindful of our precious tax dollars. Council, unretained a motion? Mr. Joyce?
I move that we approve change orders for watershed three drainage improvements, phase one, Banyan Drive and Glen Tower Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
A second.
Second, or.
Discussion.
Mr. Isbrand, thank you, Mr. Gregory.
I agree with all the change orders but the last one. And why are we paying for destruction of driveway that may have been caused by the contractor? Did we make a determination that the contractor did not do the damage?
Sir, we looked at that from the inspection side, and again, that was the statement that was made, and the contractor looked into it, I agree, Jason, from that standpoint, and it was determined that there wasn't cause to determine that the contractor actually did it from that standpoint. So.
What was that again?
There wasn't cause for, that showed that the contractor had damaged it.
Okay.
So, in this case, I went ahead and assisted with the resident to make sure this was taken care of.
I think Mr. Gregory's question is if the contractor damaged it, then they should have paid for it, is that correct, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah.
Oh, definitely, and I think that is the case, and I think on one particular driveway, they took care of something they did damage. Go ahead, Jason.
Yes, we ended up looking at the, the driveway prior from our, from our pre-construction photos and post-construction photos, and the evidence was inconclusive, so, like Mr. Rapley said, it was more so to kind of appease the, the resident at the time, so.
I think in that.
Are you paying for it, or we?
It's, it's part of the change order that we did as a city, and in good faith, we took care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, I, if we have any further discussion?
I entertain a motion. Also, like, Mayor, can I just say one point? I, I think on the change order was particularly at one hundred Glen Tower, the resident took a brunt of the, of the project there and had requested the fence, so in good faith, I made a determination to assist because she lost some of the trees, there was also protection with the driveway that was put in, plus the guardrails, so between myself, the engineers, and the contractor, we made that decision in good faith to assist that resident.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Item number three, discussion and possible action on resolution twenty twenty dash one-one dash one-zero, a resolution of the city of Council of Castle Hills approving the twenty twenty certified tax rule, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is the, uh, this came from, obviously, the, the Tax Assessor's Collector, this is something that's done annually through a resolution here to approve the certified tax rule of twenty twenty. And if anybody wanted to see more details, we have the entire CD in the city secretary's office for review, but attached is the certified rule for the jurisdiction summary, and then the letter with the summary report of values and levies. Again, this is something we do annually when we close out the budget, adopt it, the tax rule, and then we get this from the assessor's office.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the twenty twenty certified tax rule.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory, do we have a second? A second by Mr. May? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Item number six, discussion and possible action on establishing a council relations policy and a code of ethics for the city of Castle Hills. I think we can all agree that we've done the best that we can running the city, but as, the more time that we spend here, the more we realize that we're lacking some of the procedures that should be implemented to ensure that we're doing the job as we know how, and to pass down some historical knowledge to our predecessors so that they don't have to learn the same way that we did. I asked Mr. Rapley to put together some framework, and he worked with Mr. Schnell to put together a pretty stout package of information on best practices and standard operating procedures that they've borrowed for some of our neighbors around the area. Additionally, I've come to find out that there is a award by the Texas City Manager Association for the City Council of the Year. So, what I would like to do is put a special emphasis on accomplishing the code of ethics primarily before the year end. I understand that there's a lot of information that needs to be discussed here, and I would encourage all council members to ask questions directly with Mr. Rapley, or however you see appropriate. But again, my goal is getting the code of ethics done this year so that we could potentially apply for that, because I feel like that recognition would be a huge accomplishment for the city of Castle Hills, given all that we've been able to accomplish this year, even in light of the pandemic which has plagued us all. That being said, I'll entertain any motions or discussion? Mr. Isbrand.
I, I guess for discussion, Mayor, first of all, I, I'd like to commend everyone involved with this, I think it's already a, an excellent body of work, it's what most other municipalities already have in place. And I think, to your point about particularly the code of ethics, that it really speaks to a statement of the integrity and principles by which we operate, not just as this city council, but as this city. So, I think this is very important work that's being done. In the interest of your desire to have this ideally by the end of the year, and recognizing that there's only one more regularly scheduled council meeting before that happens, I wonder if it might be appropriate to consider perhaps a, a committee appointed by you, Mayor, of a, a couple council members to bring us back a recommendation in December that would refine this.
Mr. Isbrand, I think that's a great idea.
So, I, I'd put that on the table, not as a motion yet, but to, you know, see what y'all's thoughts are, but understanding a desire to move this forward rather quickly.
Uh, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, my thoughts are very similar. I had lined some things out, no substantive changes, I applaud this effort, just some insertions of, of connector words that were inadvertently left out, and then just some language. I wanted to deliver this to either Mr. Rapley or a committee so that we could have that done in a more meaningful and deliberative fashion rather than hacking through it tonight.
I, I completely agree, I understand it'd be a little bit cumbersome for us to be making changes as we go. I'd like to put together a committee, as Mr. Isbrand has said. Mr. Gregory.
Well, I've spent several hours wandering through this, and I agree with about eighty percent of it, but there is substantial things in here that should not be. And I, I think it has got to be other discussed now before it goes to this committee, or when it comes back. But there, there are quite a, there's several things in here that I don't believe belong here or should be here. And I, I don't know how we get that notion over to the committee, if we, if we have a committee, unless we go over this page by page. And, and let the committee have a sense of what the, the overall council feels.
Mr. Schnell, question, would it be possible for Mr. Gregory to draft a public letter to the committee addressing his concerns?
I wouldn't call it a public letter, but, but certainly, whoever you, I, I agree with the concept of the committee consisting of members of the governing body, and that, that anyone not among the two, I suppose you'll appoint, because you really can't appoint more than two without running into the Open Meetings Act issues. But all the members of the governing body can submit comments, I would suggest they be submitted to Mr. Rapley, a city manager, and that Mr. Rapley then could share them and work with this committee, if it's appointed, to refine the draft document to turn it into something that the council could vote on perhaps at the December eighth council meeting.
Perfect. Mr. Rapley.
Yes, Mayor, again, I, you know, I did work with Mr. Schnell. Ms., Ms. Craig was instrumental in helping me with some of the language and sections with her experience. This is a combination of a few cities, it seems like a lot of the, the way that's formed for a policy for council relations, the relations with staff, the code of ethics, are kind of boilerplate that I think most cities use from like TML. But some of the cities I used and tried to generalize from a standpoint that we are a general, a city, that we tried to have those contents from other cities incorporated in here. Again, this is a draft, this was the idea to put it in front of council to work through any issues or concerns you might have, suggestions, deletions, to ultimately have some type of policy in place, because I think that's been lacking in this governance system for a while, is to have a refined policy for council. This also helps a new council member come aboard, so they know exactly what rules to follow, procedures, and how their relationship is with staff from that standpoint. I think ultimately, a code of ethics needs to happen, it's a requirement, obviously, as the mayor said, for anything we try to apply to and consideration of some of the accomplishments of cities done, because majority of cities do have a code of ethics in place for council and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
I have a question.
Uh, Mr., well, Mr. Joyce and Mr. Paul will follow up with you.
I just have a, a thought. This is really important, thank you, folks, for putting this together so nicely. I'm wondering about how it's really gonna have meaning to, meaning to us and those that come after us. And rather than sitting on a shelf somewhere, I wonder if we ought to just make a pledge every year, or something like that, of certain pieces of this, and every year we pledge to follow this ethical guide or this code of conduct so that it's real, it's not just some document sitting on a shelf somewhere. Just a thought.
Mr. Joyce, I couldn't agree more. You know, I've, I've found, is I've spent some time and involved in the city, a lot of what we do is because we've always done it this way. So, I feel like adopting these rules formally would allow us the framework that we are agreeing to operate by, such as providing an agenda item at X amount of time, so that city staff isn't pressed to produce it on an agenda item, and that gives everybody else the amount of time they need to prepare it. So, I mean, something as small as that, and I completely agree that it should be something that we sign as, you know, rules of operating as members of the city council.
The council did direct me to establish some type of criteria for council members to submit agenda items. So, as I was looking at other cities and policies, all of them had some type of criteria and system for submitting, so I sort of used a couple other cities and thought the best process for our organization, and when we put the agenda together, and as you see language in there, I'd ultimately like to get to a point to where we're finishing our agendas and getting them out to you on Thursday night, so you get an extra day. The idea here is if a council member wanted to see it, it would be the Friday before, that does give a little bit extra time for Mr. Schnell and I to work on that particular agenda item. But I, I think the, the better we, quicker we get this out helps us internally and allows for you as council more time to review these agenda items before Tuesday night.
I completely agree, Mr. Paul.
Yes. Every organization that serves the public and other organizations need code of ethics, need to understand what our responsibilities are and to whom they are directed at, and that's the citizens in this case. I find it interesting, and Mr. Joyce is correct, it's nice that we could do this, but you know, every time we get sworn in, we take an oath. And that oath is to do the best we can for our city in and our duty, and we have all experienced over the last two or three years that just because an oath is taken doesn't mean it's going to happen. And that being said, a lot of this stuff, it seems to me is already in our ordinances, we already have a ruling, I believe, that, that all agenda items should be into the office in, by Tuesday night, previous to a council meeting, and things of this nature, so. I like the substance of it, of course, but is there too much redundancy, and I guess this is a question for Mr. Schnell.
Uh, Mr. Paul, the reference you just made about agenda items by Tuesday evening, the policy that that was in was terminated by a, a previous council. It was terminated in, I, I believe in either June, I think it was in June of last year, uh, by a previous council. So, what Mr. Rapley has done is created a slightly different system with a little bit more time for staff and, to the extent necessary, the city attorney to be able to turn a councilman's concept into a resolution or an ordinance that's ready for prime time.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I appreciate your, your remembering that there was a policy, unfortunately, a prior council did.
Well, that, that goes to my point, that goes to my point that sometimes even though we take oaths, we don't necessarily do what's best for the city. take oaths, we don't necessarily do what's best for the city. Anyway, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Mayor, what I could suggest in this policy, once it's adopted and complete and to Councilman Joyce's efforts, is there could be a section where a council member could sign sort of a pledge, and this could turn into sort of almost a handbook when a newly elected person comes aboard.
I completely agree. I think that's a great idea. And Mr. Paul, to your point, I have no interest in making our jobs more complicated than they already are and any additional redundancy. I think my intent was to provide framework that helps us and our predecessors do our jobs to the best of our abilities without that substantial learning curve. Mr. Schnau.
Yeah, Mayor, and this is both relevant to both what Mr. Paul and Mr. Joyce have said. One of the requirements of the Public Investment Act is that the governing body on an annual basis reviews its investment policy and its investment strategy. Picking up on Mr. Joyce's idea, one thing that the council could consider doing and Mr. Rapley could incorporate as a new but short provision in this document is that it will be annually reviewed by the city council in order to reinforce it and also to give council people an opportunity to perhaps suggest modifications.
That's a great idea, Mr. Schnau. Mr. Isbrand.
So, Mayor, based on this discussion, I'd like to make a motion that the city council appoint a committee comprised of two city council members to be selected by the mayor to establish a draft code of ethics for the city of Castle Hills to be presented at the December regular city council meeting, and that the committee then proceed to establish a draft council relations policy to be presented at the earliest possible regularly scheduled council meeting in 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. May. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Item number seven, discussion.
Mayor, before we move on to that item, you know, I just want to let you know, and I think it was circulated by Mr. McCormick had notes and comments, so if anyone wanted to check their emails and see his, we can obviously incorporate his thoughts moving forward as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Mr. Mayor, who are you going to appoint? Because I see things in here that I really would like to have other people discuss and understand that we've made policy mistakes in the past, and they come, they're back in here again.
And Mr. Gregory, we already passed that agenda item, so if you want to reach out to me, I'm happy to discuss this offline. Number seven, discussion of possible action on a resolution number 2020-11-10-A, a resolution of the city council for the city of Castle Hills, Texas, on the proposed I-410 at US-281 San Pedro Avenue operational improvements. I'd like to pass this off to Councilmember Isbrand and Councilmember Joyce and thank them for working very quickly to put together a framework that will identify the issues of the greatest concern of the city of Castle Hills. I'm not sure who would like to be the representative.
Mayor and council, at our last meeting, we adopted a resolution expressing a general or a general expression of concern about some of the proposals that are included in the text dot plans for the construction work on I-410 and 281 San Pedro Avenue area. Following that meeting, Mayor, you appointed two members of the city council, Mr. Joyce and myself, to, with the task of assembling the appropriate resolution and documentation that would more specifically reflect the concerns that we had. Mr. Joyce and I have presented to you this evening both a resolution and an annex. The annex is a composition of concerns that were expressed at our last city council meeting, of additional input that we received from the community in the process of doing our work in putting this report together for you. Hopefully, we made it as comprehensive as possible, recognizing that technically the deadline to submit comments had already passed, and we know that the sooner that something is forwarded to Tech dot on behalf of the city, the more important it would be. Mr. Joyce, do you have anything you want to add here?
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. I think the only thing I would add is that the mayor has contacted Tech dot already with a letter, sort of outlining the concerns in a broad manner, and so they've been notified of the need for us to express ourselves. And other than that, I think you've stated it well. Thank you.
So I guess before we make, introduce a resolution for approval of this, I would just frame it up this way. I know councilors had a chance to look at the annex, if there were any additions or comments that we would want incorporated before we make a final proposal of a resolution to you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. I'd like to thank you and Mr. Joyce again for taking the time to put this together. It's of substantial importance to the city of Castle Hills. We've been negatively impacted by Tech dot before, and I'm confident that of recent years, they've been a little bit more mindful of how things will affect us, and they've been more receptive, and the fact they have left Honeysuckle Open shows they've listened. So I'm hoping this will be an additional step towards us working together. Mr. Gregory.
They did to put this together. I would add only one thing on the fourth, whereas on page one halfway down, after projected additional traffic volume, I would add potential loss of property values.
Is that factual?
I would add, in the fourth, whereas, on the first page, halfway down, it says, the projected additional traffic volume, comma, I would add potential loss of property values, comma, and then the rest of the sentence.
Gentlemen, are you all in agreement with that?
Absolutely. It's a great addition. Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Potential loss of property values.
Mr. May, do you have any comments?
I think that's an excellent addition. But we need a motion, don't we?
Oh, let me, let me just make, I'll let somebody make a motion on that.
All right. So we'll move adoption of resolution 2020-11-10-A, a resolution of the city council for the city of Castle Hills, Texas, on the proposed I-410 at US-281/San Pedro Avenue operational improvements, as presented and incorporating the one addition from Mr. Gregory.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Joyce. Any further comments? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Proceeding to item number eight, discussion of possible action on a resolution number 2020-11-10-B, a resolution of the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, recognizing the city, the Castle Hills Business Association, and this is brought forward by Mr. Joyce and Mr. May. Again, I'd like to thank council for taking time outside of our regular monthly duties here to put together something great for our city. If you haven't heard about the recently started Castle Hills Business Association, it's a small way for us to help our businesses come together and provide resources that any business needs, especially now during the pandemic. I'm not sure which one of you gentlemen's going to be speaking to this.
Thank you. Yes, while we, as you all know, we've been talking about this, Councilman May and myself, for the last couple of months, and it's underway, and we're very pleased with the way things have gone so far. We'd like to see more attendance, but we've had a lot of enthusiasm, and the city's been very generous. Mr. Rapley and Mr. Harada and his guys have been very helpful in setting up for us early on Friday mornings a couple of times, so we're very grateful for that. But it's really something that could be very, very useful, and I think ultimately maybe one small piece of something we call economic development. And if we can encourage businesses to work together and to get to know one another and network, and to get to know us, you know, we can only gain, both sides can only gain. So we thought it appropriate just to bring this resolution and ask council to more or less bless this idea with this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have any comments, questions, motions? Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve resolution number 2020-11-10-B, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Item number nine, discussion of possible action on setting a date to conduct a performance evaluation of the city manager. Mr. Gregory.
As I've been sitting up here on and off for the last 20 years, one of the biggest faults the council has had, and this is council after council after council, is that we never have an annual review of the city manager's performance. An annual review is imperative to let the city manager know what we think of what he's doing, if things he can improve, and things like that. That would have forced all, I think, quite a few errors that have occurred over the last many years. I think this ought to be an annual thing, a one-year anniversary of, just around one year anniversary of when this, whoever the city manager is, when he started, we have a review. All the other department heads have reviewed. I think this is an imperative that the council get involved in this, and it can be nothing but a beneficial thing to the city manager to get feedback on his performance and how things might improve. It's a, it's a good, it would be a very good thing to do. The best of my knowledge, I've set up here, I can only remember maybe twice we've ever had a review of a city manager. Maybe. I remember one in particular, but we may have had two. And that's just, to me, very poor management, and it's a disadvantage to the city manager more than anything else if he just goes along and no one says anything. So I'm proposing that we have a performance evaluation, in his cases, for the January of next year. The evaluation would be determined, Mr. Rapley, by something Mr. McCormick had written up or we had agreed to in the past, is a good review, and I think it ought to be done annually.
Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Gregory, I wholeheartedly concur. I don't think any of us in our businesses where we report to somebody go year after year without any kind of formal feedback, and I think when they're done well, they're constructive to all parties involved. So I would expect that that would be the case here. The one thing that I hope we would consider along with this, if we're going to set a date for this formally, whether it be January or something after that point, is that we also have associated with that consideration of a new contract of employment for the city manager. It has been, and I may be very wrong in my time on this, but I believe Mr. Rapley had a one-year contract which expired or passed by a year and a half, two years ago. We all know how competitive it is to find good, if you'll pardon the expression here, Mr. Rapley, good employees, people who are really, who really do their job well. It's very competitive. There are cities that are always trying to steal away our employees, and I think it is in our best interest to ensure that when we have exceptional employees, we do everything we can to retain them. So I think that it would be very appropriate as part of a performance evaluation process to also consider a new contract for employment.
In the contracts in the past, there are, I don't know of any one that doesn't have a at-will clause in there, that he can quit at will or we can quit him at will. That would be the one of the things in there. But there are a few other things that have cropped up over the years that the council hadn't thought about, but certain city managers had, and I think it ought to be, it ought to be a good contract benefiting everybody concerned, so that we feel we're all in this together. So I agree, the contract should be reviewed at least annually with a review of pay.
Mr. May. I'm sorry, Mr. Gregory.
I do know that Mr. Rapley just recently came up with an absolutely outstanding idea that I'm going to lay as a little bomb on the council sometime in a month or so from now, that when I heard what he had to say, I said, I should have thought of that myself. And he comes up with these things every now and then, and they should be acknowledged and worked on and reviewed.
Mr. May.
I agree with all the comments, and I think our city manager has literally saved us tens of thousands of dollars that goes unnoticed. I do have one variance, though. I've always found that annual evaluations around the holiday season go much better, and I would be in favor of an earlier evaluation than January.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Rapley, can you correct me, but if I'm not mistaken, it was April of 19 that his contract was extended for two years. Is that correct, Mr. Rapley? So it would be up in April.
So, Mr. Paul, the, just the terms of the contract were extended
Right.
To the April 2021, just the term itself
That's what I asked.
Of the contract. Yes, sir.
Mr. Joyce.
I'm wondering the process we're going to use to conduct this evaluation. Is it something that might be best done by a committee amongst us and maybe private conversations with Mr. Rapley with a public summary report or something to the citizens, or is this something that's got to be out in the open?
Mr. Gregory.
In the past, the one time that I remember we did it, what happened is we gathered in the community room, everybody got their sheet down and various questions, and we read the answers in the community room with the city manager present. I think that is, when you have, when you're doing a review of an employee, for example, you don't ask the whole department to come in and sit down as you're discussing one employee. I think it's good that the city, if it's agreeable with the city manager or any city manager at the time, I think it makes sense to be able to speak frankly in an executive session, to go over these things with a city manager. He can speak frankly back, and we can move from that point. But I think it is a benefit to the city manager and the city that we do the review in executive session.
Mr. Rapley.
Again, I, as city manager, I do have the right to have it in the public arena as well.
I would personally, and I can't speak for Mr. Rapley, but having seen this come along a couple of times, I think that it's in the best interest of transparency for us as representatives of the city and transparency for whoever the city manager may be to have it done in public. I think that any attempts to do this in executive session may lend itself to questions, and I think that this new city council, which is doing everything it can to be transparent, should hold that in the same regard for the city manager's evaluation.
Well, it is up to the city manager, as Mr. Rapley said, but in the business world, you don't open these things up to everybody concerned. You'd like to have a one-on-one with people. But you're, but Mr. Rapley is right. If he doesn't want to do it that way, he can have it in open session. I have no problem with that.
Sure, I understand. Any further questions, discussion? Mr. Gregory.
I would like to move that we have, that we set a date at the, when do you want to do it? That we set at the next council meeting, a, conduct a performance evaluation of the city manager, which may also include a new contract, terms or an extension of the old contract, and our discussion of salary and benefits increase.
We have a motion by Mr. Gregory.
Second.
Second by Mr. Isbrand. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Mr. Rapley, if you can add that to the December agenda, please. Item number 10, discussion of possible action on a resolution number 2020-11-10-C, a resolution of the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, recognizing and supporting the Castle Hills Historical Society's efforts to plan the seven efforts to plan the 70th and 75th city founding. Mr. May.
I'll make it brief. I realize I'm at the end of the line here. This is to really cause a little more recognition and allow for more posting opportunities on our website and start our regular meeting process. I do think it's terribly important that we commemorate our upcoming anniversaries. I think it's very important that we try our very best to make sure our history is not forgotten. And all the stories that I've heard just in the last probably three months since we started this process are energizing to me. But for the lateness of the hour, I would just move that the city council approve the resolution number 2020-11-10-C as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Lastly, councils by mayor and council members on items of community interests. Mr. Gregory.
Gobble, gobble.
Mr. Joyce.
Well, I'll just mention quickly that our committee working on the comprehensive plan is making progress. We had a visit the other day with a potential urban planner to kind of guide us through the process. Most of these things, as you all know, are done by pretty much consultants, variety of planners and architects and engineers, but we're basically doing it in-house. So we did think it was a good idea to have a professional guide us along the way. And so we're working on that. In the meantime, committee is working on the process and the timing and just the content of the plan. And so we're just making progress.
Thank you, sir. Mr. May.
We still have plenty of room on the Historical Society. So anyone out there that's listening, give me a ring.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Paul.
Yes, there's a couple of things been going on which I think need to be recognized, and that's the Castle Hills Community Organization and a lot of work through Judy Crawford. They've been collecting toys and donations for Elf Louise, and they've apparently been very successful at that. And then just today, I was reading on the Facebook page or something that the Garden Club has collected a pretty substantial funds for the Fisher House, which is the house that houses families that come in for the injured relatives at the Fort Sam. And I think their efforts go too many times go unsung. And I think it's just fantastic, and they're such a great representation for our city, and I just like they need to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Paul stole my thunder. I'll just simply say that we are so fortunate to have the types of community civic organizations we have in this city that do so much great work every single day. So thanks to all of them.
Completely agree. A couple of things I'd like to mention. One, we still are dealing with this pandemic. As the holidays come in, I encourage you to do everything you can to protect yourself and your loved ones. In that same vein, we did pick up some where I picked up some more face masks from our partners at Bear County, and Mr. Rapley and I have been discussing a business pickup. So we're going to set something up here at the city where businesses can come by if they're interested. So you can expect to see details on that coming out here soon. One thing that hasn't been discussed but is going on, and it's of big substantial importance, is we have started with additional repairs in the Banyan area, specifically asphalt that was coming up in the end by Tamworth, which is just another step of this council making decisions to improve the quality of life of our residents. And lastly, I'd like to make a small announcement. It's not official yet, but you can expect to see a lighting contest that we'll be doing in the city. As Mr. Paul and Mr. Isbrand and Mr. Rapley have mentioned, CHCO is just doing so much, and this is something else that you can expect to see from them. I am personally donating a $100 gift card to a Castle Hills restaurant to the winner, whoever that determines to be. So look forward to that.
Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I should have mentioned the Castle Hills Women's Club also dealing with the Elf Louise. Judy Crawford's just is everywhere. I should have mentioned the Castle Hills Women's Club. They've been part of that very big effort put on for Elf Louise. And so thank you for letting me interrupt.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
She is everywhere, including still volunteering in our permit office.
She really is. Thank you, Ms. Crawford, if you're watching. That being said, council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved that we adjourn.
First, by Mr. May, second by Mr. Joyce. All in favor? Okay, everybody have a good evening. It's 8:45. Meeting is adjourned.
Mayor, just a reminder, we're closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day.
Yes, sir. Thank you.